Okay, welcome everybody to the November 8th, 2018 meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board. Allison, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke?
Here.
Uh, Burton?
Here.
Um, Tidings?
Here.
Nursing?
Here.
Sangster?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
Weiser?
Here.
Okay, we have minutes from our October 11th meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review them and view the meeting. Maybe entertain a-
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion Burton and Tidings.
Process of elimination, honestly.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi.
Okay, Zach, you want to run through our table applications and action items?
Let's go for it. We'll jump into the table applications. The first two require no action by the board this evening. So we'll jump back into Pennfield Square for their project. Leading up to this meeting, the board's been doing a heavy review of the architecture proposed for the project. See if we can pull those up. And between the board's last meeting and now, we received the final memo from your land- architecture consultant. Wrong one. His final comments were that the designs that are proposed at this point are much more compliant with the mixed-use design manual. And he's supportive of what's been revised as shown on those drawings. He did encourage the applicant to keep working with the board, developing the landscape plan and the finer amenities that the board's also been discussing.
I don't see the updated architectural in the project folder where the-
Elevations, oh nine. You're hovering on it.
Oh.
You can just do the whole set. Thank you. So we went through these the last time. And, you know, everyone's had some soak time now to think about this. Just wondering if there are any final comments from the board with regards to architecture, materials chosen, colors, overall theme? Ask us where you want us to go and we'll show you the picture.
I'm still a little bit, I guess, a little bit uncomfortable with some of the materials for the independent living building. I'd love to see some type of stone or brick or something that's, something that's a little bit more timeless or seemingly timeless. I don't know.
May I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So you have a couple of stone elements now on the middle section here of the building. Is that something you'd like to see expanded? Or different tones? And we have it also going along the bottom, I think. That's an example of one area. Do you want to see the rest of the building?
Yeah.
If you scroll to the next page, um, you should see the other elevations of the building. So you have that, and you're continue- this is going from the building to its right, going out towards 250. So you have this view.
That's the northern elevation, right? Right, that's west three.
Let's just pan across the screen here.
So that's a-
So this is kind of getting nearer to, um, the out parcel.
That's from inside the courtyard. That's from the courtyard, from the, uh, the public square.
Correct, looking-
Looking at the building, uh, toward 250.
Mm-hmm. You can kind of see the grade change there as well, to kind of identify that by her.
So they changed some of that stuff to stone or brick? That split face block or what is that?
That's stone there. And that's kind of facing, again, you're looking from the south, looking at south face.
I'm sorry, it is manufactured stone.
So you're looking at south face, which is near the entrance drive coming in.
So as you turn in and you look right, you're- that's the elevation that you see right there?
Yep, that and along with the-
And you scroll to the right is the, uh, the end of the public square.
Mm-hmm.
The main entrance. Is it right there into the right?
Yeah.
No, meaning, yeah, where his cursor is?
I see that the- that's east.
It's an elevation east to-
So that's the back side of-
South, south. There's south one.
Probably on the previous page.
Okay, that's south one.
Yep. So we're kind of in summary. So in summary, you have kind of two areas of that stone element. One, where Doug is zooming into here in the middle of the main entrance, and then kind of the end cap as you go towards 250.
But not in- so that number two-
Is not stone.
Go back to one of the larger elevations, whether like, uh, south one or that, those. Zoom in a little bit. Could those, the number two, whatever material number two is?
Mm-hmm.
Also be stone?
Can you go to the, the materials, Doug, just to confirm what two is?
More stone in the, in the entrance ways?
Yeah, I just-
Two is just a tan siding.
To me, it's seemed to be a little bit more permanent.
Stone.
Yeah, I mean, that much side. I mean, I like the fact that they added stone. But-
Where else could they add it?
Well, at number two, if you look at the, the brownish, like, okay, so that's what, number five?
Yeah, right here. That's the number two.
That's number two.
I see, yeah.
I, I think from where we started out with the, with the sea of white vinyl siding, I think they've done a very nice job of listening to our comments. And, uh, I think that what they've done now with the different colors, the use of some, um, stone veneers and the shadow lines, I, I think they're much closer to, um, the guidelines than we were before. I mean, I, I would always love to see, you know, more natural material. But, uh, I, I like what they have. I, I think it's a nice compromise between where we were and, you know, where we talked about.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a big improvement over time. So you want to do brick all the way across the building?
That, yeah. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind seeing that.
Wouldn't be a bad improvement.
About this suction on the end near the bridge, has that current tan material? Tan siding.
Well, could they switch all the twos to fives?
Yeah, so-
That's where I'm going. Is that your question? Is it too much, is it-
Right, right now, you're, you're looking at three base colors. So if you replace all of the brown siding material with a stone veneer, you know, we've got kind of a, a two-tone. I think it's, it's a little more monochromatic than, I think this, this looks better.
Well, you're looking at, you have the stone as a brown tone, you have the dark gray, and you have the white. Would that be your three colors that you're talking about?
Yeah, but the, the, the core colors, the, the larger areas that you're seeing are the stone areas, the white areas, and the, and the, uh, brown siding. So I think if you replace all the brown siding with stone veneer, I think you lose a little bit of that contrast.
So you think there's better contrast on that left white and brown part? No, don't go, I'm sorry. So you think there's better contrast in that strike than on the right-hand strike?
Well, if, if you're looking at vertical columns, no. But if you're looking at the mass of the entire building, then yes, they do.
All right. Do we have actual material samples?
Not this evening.
Be something that I wouldn't mind seeing.
They were here a few meetings ago.
That'd be nice to take a look at the stuff, you know, give us a little bit more, while I get-
Well-
Get some more input from the-
So given the, given the magnitude of the project, um, rather than getting individual samples, maybe we can ask the applicant to provide material on board that we can leave here.
Yeah, with some layout of how it'll look on the structure.
Yeah, I mean, up until this point, we've been going through changes in materials and colors and textures, so I think this point is-
We're getting to a point where it is a legitimate ask for that.
Oh, without, yeah.
You know, we kept asking all along and changing my-
We kept changing, right.
I get the fact that that gets old. So I'll, I'll go with whatever we likes, but I would like input from, uh, Bob and Bill also on this.
And would you like to see that same type of material samples for all three buildings then, wherever there's that kind of-
Yeah.
Different materials are coming together, what that looks like?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But overall, it sounds like much better spot than, um, in terms of the overall design of the building, subject to final review of the materials.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on architecture at this point, until you see those materials?
I think they've, done quite a bit.
Okay. Then there's just two other updates that have come in. Um, we have a updated landscape plan. And Doug's showing it here. It's kind of a rendering still at this point. Still showing some improvements, uh, in the public green, in the town green, as it's labeled on the, on the map here, as well as the pocket park off to the southwest. Trying to dial in more of those details as the board has been asking. I haven't seen-
So this is submitted as a, like, a kind of a general conceptual landscape plan? Because I didn't see any-
Correct.
Actual-
Doesn't have a planting schedule or all the specs that we've typically seen. Their original landscape plan did show that, but now that we've tried to work through the town green layout, as well as that pocket park and some of the amenities that would go into all this, they've been using this to kind of communicate what that would look like. I guess my question for the board at this point is, if you're comfortable with what you see here, uh, in terms of kind of the overall layout at this point, where there's more definition to these things, would you like to see this evolve into its final form as a landscape plan with the full planting schedule and all those, uh, plantings that would be specked out?
I would say probably yes. I like the, the pocket park. I think it's kind of cool. And the town green. It's no longer just a big piece of grass. I mean, there are elements in there that create more interest to me. I would be kind of interested to know if that curved walkway is, uh, proposed to be strong enough to say hold, you know, vending trucks or- and if that's even something that's to be considered.
Pad that's shown.
Yeah.
Believe that sidewalk is, you're looking at something that's five or six feet wide.
Yeah, you're right.
And we asked them for that a couple of months ago.
For?
For providing a, a surface, a pervigous surface that could support, some entertainment vehicles, lunch trucks, things like that.
And the other option too, with that, you also have the parallel parking too, that could also be used for that if you have a bigger event. That could face that green as well.
Are those chairs or benches, one of those?
I believe they're indicated to be benches, public sitting areas. They do look like chairs. I, when we received this, we asked for a legend kind of breaking down what these icons represent. Um, it hasn't been generated yet. So I think, again, as part of evolving this plan into its final form, I think that should be on there in terms of these amenities that we're looking at.
Yeah, and then what, those elements in between the two trees there, one of those things?
That? Guessing that's a, like, a table and chairs situation or?
Okay.
Ask, if you're in the audience, I'm not sure. You can ask for confirmation too.
Table and chairs?
Chess tables. Have you ever seen chess tables?
Yeah.
It could just be used as a table for a picnic or something.
Okay. Thanks.
Play chess?
What kind of question is that? Sometimes I play chess.
Of course she does. He's not a checkers man.
Okay. All right.
Looks good.
Want any comments? All right, so we're ninety percent there on architecture, right?
And landscape. And then, um, other things I wanted to touch on with the board is if we go to the site plan, one thing, I know we've been kind of tossing around to staff and what the board's been looking at, as well as the applicant, is the question of, um, what type of like sidewalk, pedestrian sidewalk, crosswalks you'd like to see as part of this development? Again, mixed use is new, and we're still developing what the final profiles will look at in terms of the engineering details, you know, for, uh, complete streets and raised sidewalks or just crosswalks in that matter. I know recently, like in Baytown Plaza, we started using some raised pedestrian crossings to help slow down traffic and, uh, protect pedestrians as they're crossing through. Wasn't sure if that's something you wanted to see here along Road A and throughout the project for, and for future developments as, as those come in. Because we are expecting a lot of pedestrian traffic to go from the YMCA north and from this site to the YMCA. So just wanted to open up that discussion tonight and see what kind of direction you wanted to go in terms of pedestrian connectivity.
I think we should give this to Bruce and ask Bruce to start reviewing, because these are all, you know, hardscape elements that you're talking about, that are, you know, spelled out somewhat in the mixed-use development guidelines. And it kind of falls in concert with that previous image that we saw with, you know, benches and lighting and all those other elements that we talked about in that old charrette that we had downstairs a couple of months back.
So these are not your, from the landscape perspective, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. So when, uh, they're going to work on providing that kind of final, uh, landscape plan that we've been looking for, and then we could send that off to Bruce and start getting comments?
You know, I, I'd rather the board use our consultants and get their comments. They look at these things every day, and then we can see whether or not we agree with Bruce's assessment than, you know, us just throwing around critiques about the materials that they've chosen.
Agree with you on that. I think one of the things we're talking about is, uh, you know, in terms of a crosswalk going across the street, do we raise it so that it slows down traffic and provides potentially safer access for pedestrians crossing that Road A?
I, I think a raised crossing is always a good idea.
And I don't know how much Bruce, you know, I certainly think he can weigh into that, but I, you know, I'm in favor of the raised crosswalk, for sure.
That's, that's something, personally, I would see it more along the Road A, Road B situations. Is that something, I don't know if it's something you want internally, kind of as you go around like the, the public green area? There's crosswalks identified there?
Anywhere near the volume of traffic.
Right.
Maybe the, I don't know, if you have the first two, you know, the southernmost crosswalks of that U Drive. I don't even know if that's necessary. Definitely along Road A and Road B.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
I don't know if they're really necessary bumps, but they probably might aid a little bit more security, I guess.
If you have people coming from the Y.
Yeah.
Uh, or people going to the Y from, you got older folks that are going to be slower. We also don't want it to turn into a drag strip for cars pulling in off of 250.
It's a good traffic calming measure as you're going, download that main roadway that's going to wrap the project and continue north eventually. And for now, it's-
Think it'll work?
For now, it's going to remain private too.
I'm not really there for them, but yeah. If you think that'll work there.
Right now, it's proposed as private.
Okay.
Eventually, yes, but we would have our highway guys look at it. It's not something that you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to, would not be able to plow, given the new plow blades that we have out there. It's not just angled the whole time where it hits it. You got articulating blade that could get over that. Same thing for private management when we take care of it. It also helps give kind of a, define a landing pad for people as they're going to the YMCA property.
Yeah.
So. I know it's something the applicant's still working on, is kind of just further, kind of like cleaning up where that crosswalk's coming in in the middle on Road A, to try and give a more defined area, a more protected area for pedestrians as they're entering, uh, the YMCA's site.
All right, yeah, I think that's a yes. Who knows?
Okay. Again, no updates with SEACR. We are still working through, uh, utility and drainage. They are a lot closer on their final designs. We'll get that to the board as quickly as, as possible. But until then, we're still not in a place to complete the SEACR review yet, as that's a big part of it. But they are making a lot of progress, which is good news. Other than that, I don't have any other updates on this project.
All right. You have a comment from you guys? Did you move the table?
I'll second it.
Okay. Moved and seconded the table.
That was Burton to Ruth and Tidings.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi.
All right.
I'll give you a toss-up. Would you like to talk about your sketch plan or, um, Delta Sonic? The five minutes that we have.
Five minutes? Are we going to be able to get through either one? Will we get through Delta?
We get through one, if you get through one.
Chance we get through Delta Sonic? We're not getting through, uh-
Some Delta Sonic?
Yeah, let's try Delta Sonic, see if we can-
Okay. Sorry. Second table of applications is for Delta Sonic, the, uh, overall expansion of the, of the facility to include indoor and outdoor vacuums, along with other site improvements for, uh, the queuing lanes for car wash, the, uh, spray booth leading into the tunnel, overall landscaping and everything. One thing Doug's pulling up is just something that, in terms of architecture, we got a final design of what the spray booth is going to look like. It's similar to what the outdoor vacuum, what the indoor vacuum building will look like in terms of, um, the color choices. Just wanted to throw this up here for the board to look at before, um, going into the draft approval resolution.
Okay.
Thoughts, concerns?
Kind of looks like the rest of the site, right?
I would say it's consistent. With that being said, we have prepared a draft approval resolution for your review. It does include conditions of approval regarding the noise and monitoring the noise, from the vacuum blower motors. You know, at last time, we talked about that the southern one is going to be enclosed as a buffer for the noise to help kind of contain some of that. And the one to the north will be landscaped. The third will be in the building for the indoor vacuums. The sound study was updated last time. We went through that, went through all the decibels that were estimated and predicted for this use. Everyone was comfortable with that. So, that being said, is there any other questions or concerns from the board regarding this project?
All right.
Just, I mentioned to everybody that, you know, the parking concerns, but hopefully, we're not going to have any against down the road.
We'll keep track of it. Definitely will.
All right.
So we have an EAF and a, and a resolution to take a vote on?
Yes, I want to move to approve the, uh, EAF.
I'll second it.
All right, thanks.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi.
Okay, we have a draft approval resolution.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tidings?
Hi.
All right. Got her done before seven.
Uh, because we have parcels for a portion of Walworth and Gannanda, since we do have, like, we had the Watson-Holbert application where they were sort of involved. So we have a buffer area of parcels a half mile outside of it.
Okay, I think we're going to have to hold off on the rest of our action items until after the sketch plan hearing. So we will, uh, recess for about three minutes and reconvene up in the dais.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 8th, 2018 meeting of the Pennfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you, everyone, for coming. We have one item on our agenda this evening. It's a sketch plan. For those of you who aren't familiar with a sketch plan, a sketch plan in the town of Pennfield is an informal review of a concept for a project that a developer or an applicant has. It's not an official application at this point. Thus, there are a lot of details lacking in the, uh, engineering and other parts of the, uh, plans and, and project that would normally be done in a, an actual preliminary and final application. So that said, if, if you see things that, hey, this, this part isn't detailed out enough, the reason for that is that it is an informal, uh, review before any actual application may or may not be submitted. How we go through the process here is the applicant will present their project to the board. Board members will ask questions as we get them. And then we want to open it up to public commentary and public questions and comments. If you have a, a desire to speak, there are some sign-in slips over there on the table. You don't necessarily, you don't have to submit one of these, but, uh, you can if you'd like. Otherwise, I'll go through these first, and then if anyone else wants to speak, uh, raise your hand and I'll call on you. If you're called on to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and address your comments to the board and not the applicant. And also, please silence any cell phones and other devices like that. So with that, Zach, please read our sketch plan application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sketch plan application for Walter Baker, DSB Engineers, 2394 Ridgeway Avenue, Rochester- Sketch plan application for Walter Baker, DSB Engineers, 2394 Ridgeway Avenue, Rochester, New York, 14626. On behalf of Redstone Builders, request an informal discussion before the board with plans for a 13-lot residential subdivision with associated site improvements on a 10.19 acre property located at 1725 Scribner Road. The property is now or formerly owned by RB Land Company and zoned R120. Application number 18P-0031, SBL number 124.05-1-1.
Good evening. I'm Walt Baker with DSB Engineers and Architects. With me tonight is Mr. Steve Philippone, Redstone Builders. He's the owner of the property. Zach mentioned, we're here tonight for a sketch plan review for the project we're calling Scribner Subdivision at this point. We'll probably change as we go on. It's a 13-lot, single-family residential subdivision on 10 acres of land. It's, our proposal is to utilize what's referred to as Town Law 278, which is, instead of doing a conventional layout, which we presented the concept plan as part of the requirement with the town. When you're requesting to use Town Law 278, you have to submit a concept plan illustrating both the conventional plan, which is the plan over on the left-hand side, I labeled the conventional plan. And then the Town Law 278 plan would be on the right-hand side. As I mentioned, this would permit the 13 lots in conventional layout. Coming in, we'd have one lot here, town dedicated road, and then the other 12 lots from north to south. With the 278 plan, what we'd like to do, is the 278 plan, obviously, we'd like to preserve 3.3 acres, plus or minus, of the 10 acres and as open space. It would be a deed restriction. And one of the lots, which we call Lot Number 13 at this time, so that 3.3 acres would also be part of Lot 13. So it wouldn't be town land. We're not proposing to dedicate it to the town, but keep it as a deed restriction. So the owner of that property, when, when somebody buys it, they will not have the ability to improve it, subdivide it, or just leave it in its natural state. So that would be a, obviously, a benefit for the project. We do have varied lot sizes on the 278 plan versus the conventional plan, which are listed over here. The lots would vary from 100 feet wide, 80 feet, setback through the curve. And then we have these two lots here, which would be even larger in what's called the front setback width of the property. So they do range in sizes from approximately 9,500 square feet to over an acre. The two lots, Number 12 and 13, obviously, the usable area is over an acre in size. 13 would be the acre plus the three and a half acres, so it'd be basically four acres, larger than four acres. So we will have public roads. It would be a public road and a public water main, storm sewer system, and an onsite detention facility, which would be in this area here. We did receive comments from the town for the PRC comments with their review. If you'd like, I can go over those.
You can do a brief if you want.
Okay, yeah, we, we don't have any issues with their, with their comments. They're pretty technical in nature. Basically talking about complying with the sidewalk policy and the streetlight policy. The onsite detention facility, they, at this point in time, we're thinking that they may wanna take that over and have it as town-owned versus just an easement. Generally, we put, put the stormwater facility, and then we have easements across the property that it's on. So the town has the right to go in there and, and maintain it if in fact there's a problem. But they made comments about possibly actually having that dedicated to the town and connecting it. The town actually owns a strip of land right behind us to the west. So I believe that's what they're talking about incorporating that in that strip of land as well. So the other comments that we had, besides the streetlights and the deed restriction, and the strip of land between the two lots, which naturally we'd have an easement for that, so we would do that. The hammerhead turnaround, they wanted us to show that it would conceivably be done. Having the hammerhead, which this would be a standard town hammerhead at each end of the project, both conventional and the 278 plan. So we can comply with that. Drainage concerns, they asked if we'd address the drainage concerns with the town engineer. Naturally, we'd do that. I've already given the town engineer some preliminary calculations for the sizing of the pond, which will, there's more inadequate space on both the conventional plan and the 278 plan to accommodate that. And Ross Brook, they mentioned that we may have to clean Ross Brook. So we'd be acceptable to doing that.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Yes. The discussion of the hammerhead versus the cul-de-sac versus the temporary tee turnaround that I'm showing on my plan, is that an updated?
Yes.
Version up there?
Yeah, we, we received supplemental comment about the hammerhead turnaround because, what we showed on the plan that we submitted to the town was only a single-sided versus a double-sided one. So we can obviously accommodate the full tee turnaround for that. So that's why I showed it on this plan. Obviously, the one that you received at the submittal had it on a single side.
Okay. And I think that, can you describe a visual of what neighbors might see? So let's say I live on Scribner Road right now, and this is proposed to go, you know, in my backyard.
Right.
Behind my property.
Okay.
What's the impact? What am I gonna see? Or if I live on Fallbrook or Treebrook?
Right. Well, Scribner, as you can see, we're gonna come in with a dedicated road from Scribner. So the home that we're proposing would be over 200 feet back from Scribner. So the existing vegetation and trees along Scribner, we would maintain as they are today. So basically, there'd be a road cut in the road, and the existing trees on the north side of the road would remain. We wouldn't touch any of that. We even showed a setback of 100 feet. Obviously, I don't think Steven's interested in building anything. You wanna keep it basically where we show the, the footprint of the house on that lot. So from Scribner, other than seeing the road entrance, you're not gonna really see much from Scribner. As far as Fallbrook in the back, we do have it. Obviously, the 278 plan would only have houses on the north end versus the conventional plan. And like I mentioned, there is that separation distance with the town-owned land behind us, which abuts the Fallbrook properties. Obviously, I tried to illustrate that. So there's a spacing of over 50 feet there, plus our house, and then obviously our setback. So we don't wanna take any trees down that we don't have to, so we're gonna try to keep all the existing vegetation along the property lines that's there now. I submitted photographs with our application, and you can see from the photographs that, we took those photographs last spring when we were first submitted to the town board. We're looking at a transfer of development rights project. And so that didn't work out so well with the town board. And, but we did have photographs that we took last year in April. So there was no leaves on the trees at that time. So you can see from the photographs that there are existing trees there. They're varied in sizes. There's some, obviously, undergrowth. And we'll maintain everything that we can and try to keep that buffer.
Okay. Another question. Describe the proposed house, houses. What type of development are you proposing there?
I think I'll ask Steven to answer that one.
Okay.
Good evening, Steve Philippone from Redstone Builders. I'm the president and the owner, also the owner of RB Land Company. We're gonna be marketing these to seniors. They're going to be ranch homes or first-floor masters. Approximate square footage will be from probably 1,600 square feet to 2,000 square feet. And again, we're gonna model this closely to our Timber Glen subdivision that we did successfully over at the corner of Whalen and 250. So they, the other thing is, when we designed the subdivision, we're trying to keep as much of a buffer between the existing residents and future residents. Because as I explain to people frequently, as much as you don't wanna see people coming in, they want their privacy as well. So we're gonna try and maintain some buffer through existing vegetation and trees that we may plant to supplement, you know, vegetation that may not be suitable to keep. Unfortunately, not every tree that's standing is, you know, of good quality. You know, cottonwood trees and dead trees and things like that, those would, you know, be culled. And we might plant, you know, native species or spruce trees, things that will provide screening and, you know, habitat for wildlife, so.
Okay. All right.
Any variances you're gonna need, Steve, or what?
Well, we've designed the building envelopes to avoid the need for variances. Typically, what, what happens is if the setback is, rear setback particularly, is too, too large, what happens is people wanna put a deck or, you know, maybe a patio or some other structure in their backyard. And that's when you start getting into variances. We've tried to design this so that the houses will fit on the existing lots without needing any variances.
Now, the type of housing that you mentioned, you're gonna build similarly to Timberland. So these are spec houses you're building, or you have like four or five different model homes that you anticipate?
So Timber Glen was based on a portfolio of about a dozen ranch home plans, but we commonly customize. So rarely do we build the exact same house twice. We may build a house that is a variation of the same plan, but they're commonly custom or semi-custom for the most part.
Any issues with drainage back there, water?
There's no issues with drainage. We've walked the property several times, and we actually walked the property with the conservation board.
Board, yeah.
Board. You know, there's no apparent drainage issues there. Topography suggests that, you know, we've got good drainage throughout the property. And there was no evidence of any wetlands or other problems on the property.
You're gonna put any signage in front identifying the track or whatever you wanna call it?
Well, that brings up a very good point. So one of the reasons you'll see that we've tried to cluster all the homes back on the property, and I don't wanna frontage lot quote-unquote on Scribner, is so that you really don't even see the residents or the homes there from Scribner Road. To give it a sense of privacy, again, our customers are generally 50 and older. You know, they're looking for a quiet, kinda laid-back lifestyle, but still wanna have access to, you know, shopping and the conveniences within the vicinity. So we've, we've had it so that this house back here is as close to with the others as possible, and then that there'll be nothing here. So we probably will put some modest monument sign at the road so that people know how to find it. But other than that, we really want it to be kind of nondescript at the road.
Are you gonna be able to get town plows back in there or plowings?
It'll be, it's, it'll be designed to the current road specifications for the town of Penfield, including the turnarounds.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I'd like to open up the discussion to the audience. First person, I have Andy Harlan.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Andy Harlan. I live over on Seven Split Run. And I was just wondering, how much are these homes gonna cost? They're gonna start $300,000. All right. So we're looking at taxes of, what, right around 12 grand? Now, if I'm 50, older, I'm probably gonna be at right around my peak of earning potential. And I'm gonna wanna do things like add a deck, add a patio, add a tool shed, maybe a pool, right? Am I right or am I wrong? I'm not 50, but I will be in, what, 20 years? I'm gonna want that stuff, especially if I'm spending 300 grand on a house. You know, like, I just don't understand how, I mean, I'm against it personally, but how is Penfield gonna profit from these homes? You could build bigger houses there with bigger yards and charge people a heck of a lot more in taxes. It's just, to me, doesn't make sense to put in $300,000 homes in this place with no yards. You know? I'm, I'm just saying from a, you know, money perspective. On top of that, we're targeting these homes for 50-year-old people? We, how much do we just pass for our school budget? How many millions was it? 90? Wouldn't we wanna attract more of a youthful crowd into Penfield to take advantage of these awesome school systems that we have in place? And all this money that we just spent on the school system? I mean, call me crazy, but I'd say I'd want that. And then now you're establishing more of a future for the community as a whole. Right? Plus, you know, I think before we even begin building new things, we have our own problems in Penfield that need to take, that need to be, that need to be taken care of, such as Scribner Road, it's very dark. There's a lot of deer that cross. There's, I leave for work at 4:00 in the morning, and I see deer every single morning. We need streetlights on Scribner. You know, I walk my dogs every day. You know how many times I've been hit because of just, you have that little push button in the crosswalk? I mean, there's huge traffic problems right on Scribner Road. You know, without adding more, adding more subdivisions and whatnot. We need to fix what we have and make that successful before we approve new things. You know? Plus, you know, we haven't been presented any numbers on how this is gonna affect the taxpayers as a whole. All the homes around here, they're paying 12, 13, higher, you know? Maybe some are lower, you know, in the eight to 10 grand range, but no numbers were presented tonight. And me, as an engineer, I was kind of perturbed about that. You know, I was hoping to come here and have, you know, a meaningful discussion with numbers, talking, you know, what the increases in taxes will be, what, you know, maybe if there's more, there'll be decreases in taxes. You know, like, every year, the taxes keep going up and up and up. You know, when's it gonna stop? I'm 30 years old. It's hard out there for new families to come in. You know, we need, we have, Penfield as a whole needs to address these issues before we introduce new homes in more subdivisions into here. You know, there's just way more problems that need to be taken care of. Plus, you know, they were talking about drainage ponds and whatnot. What sort of diseases is that gonna open up? You know, you have young kids in the area anyway. You know, and now you're gonna, with drainage ponds, you're gonna have West Nile virus that's gonna increase. I mean, I think there's a lot of things that need to be considered here before we go and approve this plan that we have here. You know, what about, you know, what's the cost gonna be on the taxpayer? Who's gonna be, you know, assuming the burden of adding more infrastructure? You know, widening Scribner Road, maybe adding another lane, you know, adding traffic lights on Scribner? Who, who's gonna be assuming that? Is that gonna be the builders or is it gonna be the taxpayers? You know, there's a lot of questions that we need answered before this gets approved.
Okay. Just to, I can answer some of your questions. Okay. As a general rule, the, the empty nester demographic in Penfield is growing. And a lot of people are looking for a smaller lot, more of the patio home type thing. And they're, they're actually not looking to add swimming pools. They're looking to reduce the amount of maintenance that they have. So that is, that is a type of housing that has been identified in the last comprehensive plan. And that is, I guess, more of a need. A lot of people that are of that age are moving out of the town because they can't find those types of developments.
So then why do we keep increasing the school budget every year?
That, I have to say, I have nothing to do with that. No control over that.
Well, to me, it seems like that we wanna attract the younger crowd of, you know, 30, 40-year-olds with children.
The one thing that, something like an empty nester buying a $300,000 house, paying $12,000 a year in taxes, they're actually adding funds to the school without adding any burden on the school. So it's almost like you could look at it like it's free money for your kids.
Well, the schools keep expanding, so we don't need to keep expanding the schools because the empty nester population is coming here.
That's something you gotta take up with the school board.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, doesn't Penfield as a whole wanna attract the younger crowd to ensure the future generation success of the community as a whole?
That's certainly something that.
And what's gonna happen when these 50-year-olds, 60-year-olds? And what's going to happen when these 50-year-olds, 60-year-olds, 70-year-olds die? That's going to happen sooner rather than later. Who's going to buy these houses? Me. I'm going to be buying them, and I'm going to want to put in my pool, I'm going to want to put in my deck, I'm going to want to put in all those nice things. Am I right or am I wrong?
I can't say how you'll be when you're 50 years old.
Hey, younger people out there, what do you want when you get older? Do you want your swimming pool? Do you want your deck? Do you want your big yard so you could let your kids run around?
Mr. Harlan, definitely appreciate your comments. There are...
I guess my questions just aren't getting answered.
It's not that we're not answering your questions. I'm 52. I don't want a pool in my backyard.
Yeah, but the way I see it, you're going to be moving out. You're going to go to a state that has less taxes.
We can go around and around. Everybody's different, so...
Well, I'm the future here, so I'm worried about my future.
Okay.
And it seems like you're not, and that's really disappointing to me. You know, why would I want to stay here?
That's actually not true at all.
You've never answered my question.
I'm very concerned about the future, and I just don't think that you are possibly listening to my answers or agreeing with my answers. What you're saying to me is that when you're 50 years old, you're going to want a swimming pool. I'm telling you, I am 50 years old, and I don't want a swimming pool anymore. So, wait 20 years and then decide whether you want the pool. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, that's fair.
And that we're a community that tries to welcome all ages of people. So, there's an older crowd, there's a younger crowd, and there's the middle crowd. And there are housing choices for everyone here. We have a dynamic community, and, you know, I have no idea whether Mr. Philippone will pursue this project or not. I opened the meeting saying that it's a sketch plan.
Okay.
It's not an official meeting.
But then, why did I never see your sales sign?
You asked about numbers, you asked about a lot of things, and I opened the meeting saying that it was a conceptual plan.
I know, but I guess I'm saying...
So, we don't have those answers.
What's the point of even holding these conceptual plans if we have our own problems right here in the community that need to be solved first, right in the, right location, right here? Let's solve the problems that we have first before we make new ones.
Go ahead. Andy, to answer all those questions, those don't center around this project.
They do.
My name's Zach. I'm the town planner. I'm just going to try to answer everything as much as I can because there's other people here tonight who also have questions, and I want to wrap this up because I want everyone to have their fair chance, okay?
I agree.
So, a lot of the questions you brought up, the lighting, the traffic, crosswalks, this subdivision doesn't trigger any improvements for that due to its small size. They have a right as owners of this property to come and talk about this project under the town code, under the zoning district, say, "This is what we like to propose for this land." That's what the point of this meeting is for, is to hear those thoughts and comments and that proposal. Traffic lights, that goes to the state DOT. Crosswalks, that goes to the county. A streetlight would actually be required as part of the subdivision at its entrance to help light up the area, as do all new subdivisions. As AJ said, anything about taxes that is not discussed here, that's discussed with the town assessor. Anything about the school budget is discussed with the school, not this board. You're asking a lot of good questions. They can't be answered tonight because this is a concept plan. They're duly noted, but don't expect a lot of solid answers at this point.
Okay, so I guess at a future meeting?
At a future meeting. Nothing we get approved tonight. Sketch plans do not seek approvals. This is just a discussion for the board, the public, and the developer.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Michelle Harlan, come on up.
I guess my concern primarily is water-related. I own a property at Split Rail Run, which is one lot between where this establishment is being proposed. In 20 years of owning the property, and I brought the concern to the water committee here at the town before, I've noticed because of some clearing that's been done between the lot that borders my home and the one that's being proposed, has been going on recently within the past three years. We did not used to get water in our backyards at all, and now, not only is my huge back of my backyard standing water, I should have brought my muck boots this morning because I went back there today and my water was past my ankles, it's now encroaching towards my home. And I understand that there was a pond proposed, and being in the area for 20 years, there used to be a pond also on the front property at Bay Trail, and some of that area now is baseball fields. So, what happened to the water? What happened to the water drainage? And how will it be permanently addressed? Because I don't believe that a swale is a permanent solution. I know that there's some sewers further down, and the property is, there's one, two, three, four, five, or six of them that were all constantly wet. Even in the driest of seasons, it's still wet. And I guess I believe that by clearing and not having a permanent solution to the water, it may make my water problem even worse. And I guess I'd like to see a permanent solution addressed by the town. I guess the proposal here was for the water to be taken over by the town, not by the builder, but I'd like to see the water situation be taken care of for all of us in the area because as you keep clearing, the water keeps seeming to be encroaching on our yards.
Okay.
And as far as the pond goes, the other thing that I've noticed recently is the increase in geese. It's pretty messy. During the time when the school is, they seem to do something with the goose poop, but in the summer, nothing's done with the goose poop, so the school is just covered with goose, geese poop. I mean, it's really, really bad, to the point of being unhealthy, and I believe that geese seem to be attracted to ponds. And if we look at that other pond on Scribner Road, that does not look very attractive, and I believe that could attract mosquito issues or tick issues with grass around the pond, and I guess that's a concern for a lot of us with Lyme disease and other DEC, New York State diseases, if you look at a map, increasing in our area specifically.
Okay.
So, are they, you know, does the town have a permanent solution to address the water other than the pond, or could they look at another solution than a pond?
You're looking at me, aren't you?
Well, I can say, you can jump in at any time. I can say that the town engineering department is constantly reviewing drainage issues and trying to improve those things. Any new development needs to be designed and is designed to not produce any additional flow off of that property. So, let's say this moves forward, the drainage and the overall engineering design of the site is required to be such that no additional off-site, I don't know if affluent is the word?
Runoff.
Runoff would be created.
So, where would the water be going to? Into the ponds?
Well, that would depend on how the ultimate design is done, and it's all according to New York State guidelines.
See, and I guess that's just...
Stormwater management plan that's put forth.
What I'm not understanding is that I believe that our housing tract, when it was put in and overseen by...
You're north of this, right?
Split Rail Run. I don't know north, southeast, or west. I'm sorry, I don't quite understand, but I know there's one area that separates us from where the tract is proposed. I would like to see a more permanent solution than a retaining pond because mysteriously, retaining ponds seem to grow over or go away. We've seen it in the town.
Come on in, go on.
Go ahead.
All right. So, the first part of your question, the permanent solution, twofold. It sounds like a lot of what you're talking about is stuff that's happening on your property specifically?
And my neighbors.
And your neighbors. That's something that I would direct you to the town engineer for and the water check committee that you've already met with, but with regards to this project as proposed, as a sketch plan, they're proposing a permanent retention pond to hold water that would pick up all the water generated from the site, from the development, the rooftops, the roads, the gutters, all the driveways, all of that would be fed towards the detention pond shown on the map, and it would also pick up some of the water from the surrounding properties as well, things due to the way they want to do the grading. Initially, we've seen some of the grading. That's going to pick up some of the off-site water as well, just due to the natural existing conditions today. Will it fix your problems that you're claiming?
Or worse yet, will it make my problems even worse? I'm not, you know what I mean? It's kind of twofold.
Yep. So, that's something that we would look at when this plan comes in, if and when this plan comes in for final review, when we have a final grading plan available, utility plans available to look at. We don't have that at this point, but these are valid comments to bring up so that we can look at it when it comes time for that, to see how the drainage exists today in the area, how this project is handling its drainage, and that there's no negative impact to the surrounding area. That's just information that's not available at this time, as the chairman said when we started the meeting. Final designs like that are not yet available.
I just want to make sure that it is addressed, as far, whatever my direction is, up to Split Rail, included in the water concerns because by the lot behind me clearing, my water problem makes my land unusable, and I just can't foresee by clearing more land how that will impact the situation. And it's one thing for it to be in the bottom of my backyard, but for it to be coming up to the middle of my side yards, close to a lot of my expensive yard improvements, it's creating a really bad situation for me most of the year. And I've had many town people come through there and they've agreed with me, but it doesn't seem like anything can get done. And I know through 20 years, $12,000 times 20 years is an awful lot of money to, times the number of properties, for all of us to contribute to the town and not have due consideration so that our properties are usable, and I just don't want to see that become even worse. It's bad enough that it's ruining my landscaping. I don't want it coming into my home.
Sure.
And the homes of my neighbors.
Okay.
Okay, and it is a true point that once you do clear land, that the water has to go somewhere, and I just don't see that a pond is the answer, not from what I've seen by living in the area. Because I know there's a pond at the end of Fallbrook. Is that Fallbrook back there or Tree Brook, one of those? And that isn't taking care of our water problem. So, I guess I would just ask to further look into the situation of a retaining pond.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Holly Snow.
Good evening. I just want to continue to express the concerns that I've brought up at the previous meeting regarding this development, primarily about the traffic and the congestion.
Could you state your address, please?
Sorry, it's Holly Snow, 22 Fallbrook Circle.
Thank you.
So, I have concerns about traffic and congestion on Scribner, Atlantic, and the Whalen area, in particular from 7:30 to 8:15 in the morning, 4:30 to 5:30. Right now, coming out of Tree Brook, I'm unable typically to take a left-hand turn, and when coming from Whalen after picking up one of my kids from daycare, I also cannot make my turn on making a left there. Supervisor, you yourself have said that this is a failing intersection, according to the New York State Department of Transportation, at Atlantic and Five Mile Line, as well as at Whalen Roads, and so continuing to develop in this area only continues to exasperate this problem. I also would note that there's concerns about disruption to wildlife in the lands being developed. We have a large deer population back there. I know it because my dog eats all of the deer poop, and there's a ton of deer in that space, and with the areas of shadow pines being made more pedestrian and family-friendly, we are seeing even more deer come into our yard. Now, taking away what is a developed area or what is undeveloped land in that space, the deer will continue to be squished into a smaller spot or in more of our residential areas. I also have concerns about the loss of Penfield aesthetic. When I purchased my home five years ago, I did it because I was sold a house that had backed up to forever wildland, which I now know is a lie. Other of my neighbors also now know that is a lie, but we are concerned because that was actually one of the main reasons I bought that house. We know that inhabitants of scenic environments have better health. I have concerns just about kind of what that means to all of us and all of our neighbors. I like the large trees, the lush landscaping. It offers serenity. It gives our neighborhood its character, and I'm concerned that that will be impacted by this development. I also have concerns about decreases to property values. I know because of, most think that the houses that will be going in with their high value will only increase the value of ours. I actually would say the opposite. Properties which back up to woods have a higher value and are part of the ingredients for a great neighborhood, so by taking away some of the wildland behind my backyard, that influences my property value. I also can't help but think of Webster. It's a smaller community in landmass. It has more residents and more green space. It just is confusing to me that we continue to decrease both our green space in this area. The effects on the school concern me in terms of concerns with crossing. My child will be going to that school soon. Being able to cross the street there with more cars coming from another development does concern me. I do also express drainage concerns, though I know this land is not technically mine behind my house. Five trees have gone down in that land since I have been there, all of those being in the last two years. You can look up basic information from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and you could look at the specific mile-per-hour winds that are needed in order to knock down these trees unless there's significant amounts of water or issues with drainage. Based on all the windstorms that we've had in the last couple of years, they still haven't gotten up to the miles-per-hour that would be necessary to knock down this number of trees. The reason the trees are falling is because of drainage concerns and how much water is in that land, and now rerouting the creek and also just disrupting that area in general will just add to the drainage issues. I would appreciate the ability to learn a little bit more about Lot 12 and Lot 13 out of the Law 278 Plan, just to better understand what that could potentially do to preserve more of the green space in that area. Though I can state that I'm not thrilled to have this development go forward, I would like to look at what opportunities there are to preserve as much green space as possible. So, if either of the gentlemen here were able to speak a little bit more about the ideas associated with Lot 12 and 13, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hold that thought on 12 and 13. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Come on up.
I live at Six Tree Top, which is up here at the north end. I guess the question is, is there a specific amount of setback that houses are generally done in Penfield from lot lines? Because I understand the clever way it was phrased that we're going to bump them right up to the lot line so that people can't build, but shouldn't there be a setback from the edge of the property?
Yes, there is. But, and the but is the town law 278... But, and the but is the Town Law 278 cluster law.
Cluster is a good, yeah.
So let's say, let's say you have a piece of property that's, I don't know, as an example, 10 acres and it's half-acre lots. Just for perspective of easy math, because I'm a calculator generation. I don't have a calculator.
Okay.
So you have a 10-acre parcel, half-acre zoning, and theoretically you get 20 lots, right? Under Town Law 278, you could say, well, okay, I want to put those 20 lots, but I want to group them together and only use five of the acres. And the other five acres of that 10-acre parcel, I want to forever wild or something like that. So New York State created this law that allows towns to do this so that that quote-unquote 20-lot subdivision wouldn't take up the entire parcel, but you could cluster them into a smaller size. So with that, some of the setbacks can become smaller. It doesn't mean, doesn't necessarily mean that you have zero lot lines, meaning, you know, you're not necessarily building a house right up to the lot line. It just means that maybe instead of it being a 50-foot setback, it might be 35 or something like that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, with the 35-foot setback, I guess my concern is that.
I'm not saying that that's what they're proposing. I'm just using that as a theoretical.
But with, with the way it's described is that we're going to bump them as far back so you couldn't possibly build on it, and generally 10-foot setback for addition, you know, decking and stuff like that. That's going to push the houses so far to the back of the lot. And the way that, that works is because it's such a narrow piece of property, you're jamming houses in such a tight area in the north end of the property line. And by doing that, you end up with, with all of the congestion and noise and whatever else is available in that area. Obviously, you'd want to have, I mean, pushed as far to the center as possible, rather than having them as far to the back so they have more room to, in the fronts. And as you push them closer together, you enable them to build a berm and tree lines and arborvitaries and whatever else along the tops.
Privacy buffers.
Privacy buffers for the existing residents because, you know, unlike the others that are worried about the woods, I mean, our woods are going to go. It's just a matter of how intrusive this development would be. And so I just ask you to take that in consideration and try and not make it so they can put the houses six feet apart and four feet from the lot line. Make them so that they, they have to spread them out. I mean, if you put, I don't know what the average lot size is, but they're doing lots that are smaller than a quarter acre. That's, that's a pretty small lot for Penfield.
Right. And that's actually what, your comments are exactly why we have sketch plans.
Right. So that's, I bring it up now and do with it what you want. Thank you.
Sir, before you, just, just so you understand, there has to be at least 15 feet between the houses.
Okay. 15 feet. We're 15 feet apart. That's, that's city living.
Well, you just said six feet, so I, I'm just trying to clarify for you.
Okay, 15 feet is.
There has to be, yeah, so.
Absurdly tight.
That is tight.
Okay.
But that's what the, the minimum regulation permits.
If there's 15 feet apart, that means you're building houses seven and a half feet from the lot line. That's, that's.
Well, no, one, one house is permitted to be five feet off the boundary. The other one would have to be 10.
Okay. Again, from my perspective, if you're building houses 15 feet apart, directly behind my house, that's super tight. And if you're going to build them all the way to the back of the lot line, then again, it's also super tight.
Yeah, so they, and they'd have to be at least 20 feet off the rear property line. We didn't write it. I'm just trying to explain to you what the regulations say.
And I understand the, well, I didn't understand the regulations. I do now understand the regulations that they can be 20 feet off the lot line and 15 feet apart. What I'm asking is that the board look at it and say, while 278, that is the minimum required by the law, we are going to ask for more than that because that's absurd for the town of Penfield.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
You asked, your original question said what the town standards are basically for, for non-278. Your typical sized setback from a property line to a structure is 10 feet. So typically what we see is 20 feet between houses.
Well, the minimum, the minimum people are allowed is 20 feet. I don't think that anybody in this room has a neighbor 20 feet from their, their structure.
It might be so. I mean, it does vary depending on the layout of the streets, but just again, education.
Understood. It does vary within the town. It doesn't vary within this, this sub-community. I mean, split rail run are 80 feet apart. Treetop, they're 60 feet apart. There's nothing that's 15. This would be atypical.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm Kim Fulton. I live at 1759 Scribner Road, which would be kind of down almost at the end of this proposed 13 straight across. Most of my questions have been asked. My biggest one is how is it going to impact my property value? It would break my heart to see those woods go away. This plan would benefit me, so it would be kept wild as far as the trees are concerned. But my question is, I don't know if you're aware, but I have, I'm on a septic system and I think a lot of my neighbors might still be. So how is this project going to affect any of our drainage out of the septic system? Like right now, I have, it's perfect. Everything works fine. If this goes through, I'll still have woods, but, you know, this might impact some of the wetness. I don't know. Like, and these people down here, they might still be on septic. How's that going to affect that? Because that's an expensive proposition if something goes wrong.
It's a legit question.
Traffic concerns, big time on Scribner, especially during school let-in, let-out. Sometimes I can't even get out of my driveway. I'm five houses from the corner and as you get closer to the corner of Atlantic and Scribner, it's worse and worse and worse. And I want to bring up, is the daycare project still on the table for the corner?
That is, no idea.
Okay.
We haven't received anything since.
As far as I know, any, anything further from that.
Because if you start looking at everything at the same time, if these houses go and you have that extra traffic, if the daycare center goes on the corner, that's just ridiculous amount of traffic, especially let-in, let-out time. So those are my big concerns, along with everything else. I mean, no offense, I'd like to see nothing go in here, keep it as-is. So, you know, preserve the town. It's beautiful.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Anthony Audi. I live at 14 Fallbrook Circle, which is obviously on the backside of this. I wanted to explore the, the water situation a little bit more with just some very specific questions, which you may or may not have answers to. So I understand if you don't have answers. There are two major features of water that transverse this area already. One being Ross Brook and the other being a swale that was cut on the town land back here when they, the forever wild town land that we do have right here, that was cut when they put in the cultural subdivision. Are you aware of those things? Okay. My question is, is there, first question is, is there any plans to alter Ross Brook in any way as part of this? So Ross Brook won't get changed at all?
No, no, it's actually, you can see it on the plan. It's kind of dashed out in a yellow line.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, if there's a retention pond put into, I understand this whole, you can't let more water off than was going off before, that whole thing. So the, the retention pond would collect any such excess drainage that would be caused by whatever.
The development.
But with a development. Where does that drain? Does that drain at Ross Brook or does it stay there and just?
It's a retention pond, so it would stay there and naturally drain.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't impact the creek as well? Okay. And then would there be any need for a change to the swale as part of this project, do you know?
No, because that, again, their project has to treat any and all runoff generated from its site. And it can't impact the surrounding lands, even if that is town land and there's a swale there. That's designed to handle the water that goes through there now. That pond they're proposing, it's still in the design phase, but as the applicant said, it's, as you see it there, it's sized to handle what's being proposed for the development, so it's all treated there. And actually, our town design standards call for a reduction as well in terms of how much water is generated. So it's not like a one-to-one match. They have to design for an excess of that.
It's got to be a net negative, basically?
I'm sorry?
It's got to be a net negative?
Correct.
It's got to be a negative, okay. And then, does the swale that exists today, does that drain into the brook? Is that the intention of that?
I believe so. I'm not an engineer, but that is something we can check.
Okay. And then, this is more of a gripe than a question, but I'll do it anyway. Is there any, do you think there's any chance, so when they put that swale in, the, the town had said that they were going to come and maintain that swale, which I assume meant they were going to mow it every once in a while? And it's never been mowed since, since they put it in there. And my question is, again, it's more of a gripe, I admit. Is there any chance that that would change and become more positive with the advent of this development? Or is that not likely to change?
It's on its own schedule. When we maintain our swales and creeks and ditches, typically it's on the order of either 10, 20, 30 years, depending on the nature of it, what its purposes. Or, I mean, if a blockage shows up, then yeah, we have, kind of have to address that. But if it's functioning as designed and doesn't need intense cleaning, it usually has a more spread out schedule like that.
So shouldn't, we shouldn't necessarily expect it to be mowed like once a year or anything like that?
No, no.
Okay. And then a couple more questions. When that's, are you familiar with that swell?
I haven't walked it, no.
Okay. But I mean, you know of its existence.
Yes.
When, when that swell was put in, I believe that it was cut in the wrong place initially. Is that, do you know if that's true or not?
That I can't confirm.
Okay. I was just curious if it was going to need to be moved as part of this.
No.
It would, it would not get any moved? Okay. And then, I think the last question I have is, when the original, when the builder originally reached out to us, he provided something that looked like this in electronic format with the old, with the whole townhouse thing in it. I was wondering if we could get a copy of this. Is this available?
Currently, that plan is attached to our agenda on the town webpage.
Okay, so I can get right off there?
So if you go to this board's webpage and look at their agendas, that's still up and available right now. It's just at the bottom of the agenda. You got to scroll to the third page.
It's like a PDF or something attached?
Yep, all PDF.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Princess Fame and I live at 1751 Scribner Road. I do agree with everything that everybody has said in here. Thank you for confirming that the brook will not be touched. I do, in the springtime, there is runoff from that brook where I do get water in my backyard. I am on a septic tank, just like everyone else. There is a big problem on Scribner Road. The traffic is horrific. I can't get out my driveway. I have people doing 45, 50 miles an hour coming down Scribner Road just to get to the red light at Atlantic. The school buses, I live across the street and I understand that from the school buses and everything, but traffic is bad. And putting more homes into our area is going to bring more cars. More cars, more traffic, more can't get out my driveway. It will be taking the animals away. I have deer, raccoons, skunks and everything that comes through my backyard. It's great that you want to build homes for people 55 years and over. I think $300,000 to $50,000 is a lot, but if you could find someplace else to put them, that would be great. But we do, you know, we do live there. And right now, with the traffic from the school and just the other developments that have been put in there over the last, in that area over the last 25 years, it has caused a lot of problems and a lot of congestion. And there's no respect for the neighbors that live on that road. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, come on up.
Hi, Susan DiImperio, 9 St. Ebbah's Drive. I wasn't planning on speaking because you guys pretty much covered everything that was concerning me. But I did want to mention, obviously, my kids are in the walk zone. I'm scared for the kids to go out to Scribner now. We don't have sidewalks on my side, so we have to cross not once, but twice. And that button does nothing. These people are going 35 to 45, not even caring that there's two major schools right there and they're sitting there on their phones breezing right through. I mean, it's pretty much a joke. I just got a puppy. Can't even take her on Scribner anymore because I just don't want to bother. So I stay within our horseshoe and that's it. I don't know why we were never able to get sidewalks on our side. I don't think that's probably going to happen with this tract because it doesn't concern them. Although if my mom and dad bought in this tract, I would want them to be able to have sidewalks on both to go for walks. Senior citizens like to walk and get exercise. They're not going to want to walk in this strip because it's the danger zone right now. And I don't know if you guys live in that area. When Bay Trail gets out and when Scribner has events, forget it. I mean, you need 20 minutes. I live on St. Ebbah's and I have to give myself that much time. Scribner has no parking as it is. My kids have 24 to 25 kids per classroom now because we're busting at the seams of enrollment. I get that that's not going to cause this, but we haven't rezoned. Scribner is the only school busting at the seams and everyone else is not. We have the Ryan track that went in causing, obviously, I don't know if anyone's here that lives in that track, causing a lot of enrollment. And we were told it was going to get rezoned and half were going to go to Cobble's and half were going to go to Scribner. Never happened. They're all Scribner kids. My kids are getting, where they have to wait in three different lines just to get onto a computer. So, I mean, obviously, that's a totally different topic. But my main concern is the traffic and this is only going to make it worse. And I feel bad for the people buying these houses. They're going to never get out onto Scribner when Bay Trail gets out in Scribner. I mean, I can't even get my kids in the bus loop. So I don't know, obviously, there's no speed bumps. There's no anything to help this traffic. So I know a traffic study was done. What'd you find? Like, how is this going to help the traffic? Because Scribner is just a nightmare right now, as it is. Right now, we need help before we introduce this other problem. So I don't know if you guys live in that area, but you don't want to go near there when the buses are trying to pull out to bring those kids home safely. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to comment on this application? Yes, sir.
Ed, let's go 40 Willow Pond Way. I don't live in this area, but I'm on Vice President of Penfield Trails and I'm also a liaison to the Conservation Board. I don't believe the board has received a report yet from the Conservation Board. Is that correct? So those, those comments will be, whatever they are, will be written into the public record also. The Conservation Board is involved in this project. They were asked to do a piece of write-up and present it to you people. As part of Penfield Trails, we also consider trails along streams. Ross Brook is a great place to put a trail, so that's probably in our future plans too. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to comment? Yes.
Wendy Greets, 1689 Scribner Road. The property that has the greatest impact from the houses, houses along here. Currently, there are no storm sewers along that side of the road. They go from Split Rail Run across the street and along the school. Will there be storm sewers put in for the subdivision?
Yes.
Will they be connected to Split Rail Run? So it'll go right from.
Goes to our pond. Goes south.
Goes south, so you won't connect across the street to the storm sewers that are there? Okay. So you're, any stormwater is staying on the property?
Correct.
Okay. We, as being next-door neighbors, we have that, we have to, any stormwater has to stay on our property also. So that's why we, we are wet more on the north side than on that side. We've put in daylight drains that run on our property adjacent to this. You, Mr. Hetzke, you asked a question that wasn't answered in the beginning was how would this look to Scribner and to the neighbors? The two lots that are most impacted, the answer wasn't given. So this property here, how it's going to look to this property that it won't be seen from Scribner? And this property here, that's not seen from Scribner, but impacts these two properties.
Right.
Is that taken into account to lessen how it looks to those owners?
Well, just that, naturally. That's something that we definitely want to know.
Yeah, you asked it and he didn't answer it. Yeah, you asked it, and he didn't answer it, and that I, and at least one other person here has a vested interest in that.
Sure.
Will there be sidewalks along the town, the road? Are there required to be sidewalks, a short sidewalk along Scribner?
There's, they'll have to comply with a sidewalk policy, unless they apply for waiver from the town board, in which case, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the town board grants a waiver, you know, they may say, okay, we put sidewalks on one side, and then the funds that you would be using for the other side of the street, they would go into the town sidewalk fund, that there's a grand master plan for sidewalks to, you know, various main roadways and things like that throughout the town to help build sidewalks.
How does one find that grand master plan?
I don't know, that's a sad question.
Right now, the sidewalks and here?
Basically, the sidewalk policy works, and the future sidewalk installation works in such a way that we have existing sidewalks and proposed areas to fill in gaps along the main roads. That's our primary focus. A project like this would typically require a sidewalk across the frontage and both sides internally, but they do have their right to ask for a waiver from the internal sidewalks. That's up to the town board to look at that. Typically, this board has been supportive in the past of installing sidewalks to promote and keep pedestrians safe while they're walking around the area. But the sidewalk, basically, there's a list that we have that the town engineer and DPW maintains about areas of need that have kind of a priority, and they go through those as quickly as they can. There's just not a lot of money in our budget each year to get those installed, and we also have a very limited time window to get those installed, so.
Is that information publicly available?
It's something you'd have to speak with the town engineer about. I don't know what he has available publicly.
It affects this project a little bit, but because of the Shadow Lake, there's no way for anybody here to get to this sidewalk unless you walk in the road to get. So, we've got this lovely park that you would think all these residents would use. You have to walk in the road to get there.
It's one of several gaps that we have in the town.
Right. So, and with the sidewalk ending here, if they don't get a waiver, they put a little sidewalk here, then you've got this strip of land with none, and then you've got no way to ever, you have to walk across the road, and?
A lot of the reasons why we have gaps is because a lot of property owners on the mains have been resistant to sidewalks, and that's why you see so many gaps out there today. If everyone loved them and wanted them, we'd love to put them in. So, it's, sometimes it's a battle, but I think we all sit here and agree that if we can get sidewalks on the mains, we'd love to.
We were at our daughter's parent-teacher conference, is why we came in late, so I didn't hear the beginning of this. This is still under proposal?
Concept review only.
Either of these two could happen.
They're proposing the one on the right. It's required as part of this plan. It's called the 278 Cluster Plan on the right there. As part of that, it's required to show a conventional plan, which is shown on your left, using what the zoning allows today. It's an R-120 zoning district, so based on those regulations, the left is what the layout would look like if you used conventional zoning. With cluster, you're allowed to use the same number of units that's shown on the left and put them into a tighter space on the right, so that you preserve some of the natural setting that's there, so you don't use up the entire property for the development.
I'm not trying to start a fight, because I know some people aren't gonna like this question. Is it at all possible to make the exit from here, not on Scribner, and through this property?
No.
Why?
Not possible, not through town land there, and there's not enough width between the properties to put a dedicated road. And there's a creek in the way.
Yeah, I know, but I just gotta ask. The preservation of all this land here, please keep in mind that you are front-loading the two big properties that are next-door neighbors to these, these people here, while I understand they think they are?
Can you just step up to the mic?
Sorry, they're missing their forever wild, however, they have 90 feet. We have zero feet. So, we would like to see that skewed, so that at least there is more than the 10-foot, or 5-foot, or 8-foot, or whatever you were talking about with that other gentleman, setback of the properties. And then, will there, when mentioned of putting arboribides or Christmas trees or whatnot, will they be also, from the lot lines, to buffer from the neighbors who you most impact?
We're in the concept stage.
Yeah, no, you just, this is something that you said when people asked, that you would preserve as much trees as you could and make natural screening. We're kind of all looking at the Scribner Road frontage, but not looking at the neighbors' properties, backyards, and side yards that it's right up to.
They'll get looked at as the plan develops, and they're gonna have to go and do tree inventory, they'll have to evaluate the health of the trees that are out there, and then look into the buffering techniques after that.
So, I know the tree inventory, this is my, there's no trees there, they're right on the lot line.
So, that would come through in a future plan, under a landscape plan.
Okay.
This is the only plan we have to look at right now, because it is concept review. We don't require landscape, utility, full grading.
Just asking the board to keep that under mind, not just from Scribner Road frontage to make it not look good, it's for my side yard and my neighbor's backyard. Additionally, we asked this last time, I understand they're making the road, however, Penfield, but fire equipment can get in there and turn around, delivery vehicles can get in there and turn around, UPS, and then garbage, it'll be garbage at each place, not all at the road?
Correct.
That's also, I know that was a question brought up last time, and I wasn't sure if we had figured that out.
Yeah, dedicated road, a town dedicated road as proposed for this plan, has to accommodate all those vehicles you mentioned.
So, within a half mile of Scribner and Bay Trail, everybody that has to live in there has to walk. My daughter and I are 100%, the only 100% walkers. A lot of other people walk, but we are the 100%. Basically, from something that Hannah said, or Hannah's mommy said, it would take us longer to get on our car and drive than it would take to walk. However, at the beginning of the year, the town supervisor and the police chief get an email from me to say, when I get killed, my family's suing you, because I take my life into our hands. We push that button. Myself and my neighbor, we contact the troopers, they park in our lots for maybe a couple days. They put a speed trap camera on my property, and for five days, they take care of it. It is allowed, within a school zone, to have speed cameras if the revenue goes to the school. I've asked for those to happen also. That would be a great revenue generating for the area. 20 miles an hour, and you can tell if somebody's going 20 miles an hour, because it is a snail's pace. And they're not. And my young daughter, who's, you know, 3rd grader, since she was five years old, walking, I was able to petition the town and get the sidewalk at the pole changed. But again, they, the school did away with the crossing guard and put that light in there, and it just isn't the deterrent that we need it to be. I'm having to watch both directions, and as traffic increases, it'll be more difficult. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else in the audience like to comment? Yes, come on up, again? That's okay.
Hi, listening again to the comments, saying that you're gonna walk the property, and you haven't yet walked the property, you know, that the properties that are directly involved, and that will be involved. I heard one comment that said, we're gonna evaluate the health of the trees and leave, you know, what's, you know, what we decide. When the project was done at Bay Trail, they put in a big field, and they said, I said, why are you clearing all these trees? And they're saying, well, it's for the, we're just taking the trees because of the ones that were unhealthy. They took the trees that they needed to take to make the project they needed to complete.
If you're referring to a school district project, we have no say in those.
But I guess, I just think it's a play on words when people say, we're gonna take into consideration the health of the trees, when the reality is, we're gonna clear what we need to clear to fit the concept that we're trying to achieve. And I hope that the town really does keep their word and look at the health of the area, and really keep to that, because not in my time have I seen things picked and chosen. I just see it massively gone to achieve the end result that seems to be the bigger need and bigger concern. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, anyone else on the board? Additional comments? Would you like to address lot 12 and 13?
Yes.
Okay.
So, again, Steve Philippone from Redstone Builders. With regard to lots 12 and 13, those lots were made a little bit larger, not to necessarily accommodate a bigger home, but we're trying to just allocate some of the land and the open space that's there, because the town doesn't take property, from what we understand. They're not taking park districts, they don't really want conservation easements anymore. So, what we're doing is, we're carving up the remainder of the pie, putting them on these lots. They'll have deed restrictions that don't allow them to clear or put structures on the remainder of those lots, but it's just a way to use up the, quote, the excess land that's not gonna be built on. So, there'll be houses up here, closer to the road, and then this area here will be kept as natural as possible, depending on what site requirements for any drainage. Like, we'll have to put probably some access to get to this pond for the town to clean, so there'll have to be some clearing here, but we're hoping to leave the back of these lots in their natural state. With regard to the neighbors' question about what would be seen here, to be quite honest, you know, we're building there. It's not gonna be the same as it is. It's gonna change. And not that that's, change isn't always bad. The people that we typically have, that were our customers at Timber Glen, have some of the most nicely landscaped and well-kept yards, often superior to the neighboring properties. So, you know, people have a right to be able to buy a home, particularly seniors here, people who are typically the parents of people who live in the area, have their grandchildren, who may, their grandchildren may be walking across that street and coming to stay with them as daycare, you know, daycare providers after school. So, there's a lot of things that go into this project that I think sometimes people overlook. You have to look beyond, you know, maybe your own backyard, so to speak, and, you know, understand that we do have people here that wanna be close to their families, wanna be close to their children, want a small yard that are a quarter of an acre, which is predominantly the lot size here, and slightly larger. We will buffer the back of lots 2 through 5, to an extent, within the rear setback. We will have some plantings and save native trees. For lots 5 and 6, which border the neighbor to the north, there may be some limited plantings there as well, within that setback area. And, but people will see houses. That's just the fact, so. With regard to traffic, we have a traffic study that's on file with the engineering department, done by a top and highly regarded traffic engineer here in Rochester, that shows that traffic here, while there are peak times that are difficult for traffic, that the majority of the off, those off-peak times, there is actually a very low volume of traffic. And while I sympathize with the neighbors, I think that if they continue to keep dialogue open with law enforcement, and maybe reach out to the school district and talk about, maybe they should change their traffic patterns, or their, the way that they bring their buses in and out, may help alleviate some of that, or maybe they can seek an alternate entrance or exit that's not on Scribner Road. I know that property, that campus is quite large. The crux comes down to 13 lots, really is such a small development, that it is not gonna have a significant impact on that neighborhood. It's, you know, really a drop in the bucket, so to speak. So, you know, we're proposing to do something that hopefully will have the least impact, rather than the conventionally allowed drawing, which would have a substantial impact. We will not be interfering with any of the town lands that are currently owned. We will stay, quote, on our own property when we're doing any kind of development activity, and, you know, we'll be the best neighbor we possibly can. That's my comments.
Okay, thank you. Sure.
I'm Princess Fame, 1751 Scribner Road. I understand everything that you're saying, and the houses probably will go in. But for 25 years, I've been on that road, and the school have reconfigured their busing. Before, the busing was on the side of the school. Now, the buses are in the front of the school. They're not gonna go back to the way it was. And your grandparents probably want their children to come over to visit and all that, I agree to that, but it is a busy road. And it's just not the peak times of the buses. I live on that street. It's hard to go out and walk across the street. It's hard to come back from Scribner Road across the street. And honestly, it's any given time of the day. It's just not the peak time of the buses, or the school hours, or people getting off from work or going to work in the morning time. So, yeah, the houses probably will go in, but I think it is my backyard, and I think people should be considerate, because we do live on Scribner Road. We don't live in a cul-de-sac, and we don't live on a non-busy street. That is a main road that we have to all live on, and people are not considerate at all. Their speed limits are not considerate at all. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming. A lot of very good comments. We'll take them all into account. Thank you for your presentation. Like we said, this is a sketch plan, it's not an official application, and the process at this point is, the planning board will review all the comments, we will issue a letter to the applicant, based on all the comments and the current proposal, and then the applicant may or may not pursue the project. If the applicant pursues a project, we'll have another meeting like this, but it'll be an official meeting. And with that, we'll call it here and close. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you for your time.
Please.
Are you gonna start with table or?
Let's start.
Let's go through table items.
Okay.
We'll discuss this at the end. Jeff, do you have anything other than the sketch letter for 250?
I just pulled the plan.
Okay, I'll get back to it. I wanna open the letter, just to have it as an open window.
All right, so, we'll go back into our table items for the sketch plan of the Atlantic 250 McStewes Project, known as Penfield Crossings. Following the last meeting, the board discussed this, we were staffed and directed to prepare a, what are we doing?
Farm project.
Oh, that won't help.
It's not a farm stand.
We were directed to prepare a draft sketch letter containing and addressing much of the comments that were discussed by the board, leading up to that meeting and including that meeting. That letter was provided. I don't have any updates from the applicant's side of things at this point. I would open up to the board to see if you found in the letter, or any final thoughts on the project.
Bring up the letter again. Okay, and increase the, some of us are a little older, can't read that, okay?
50?
Uh huh.
I decided to open up that way, that's on me.
Okay, there's a couple things in here. There's a couple little nuance typos, but?
There's that, too.
As you begin to prepare.
Take that back.
But, I gotta remember all the things that I wanted to say on this. Overall layout, where we talk about?
Sorry. You don't have to correct it now, I'll do it later.
Okay. The, where we talk about the consideration for both sides of the road of Phase 1, the Village Square area.
Village Center, yeah.
Yeah. Scroll down.
Scroll down to get to that part. Review the phasing for the board's recommendation of food vertical mixed-use units of the project, and then you say... Okay. One thing it'd be kind of nice to know or see what the overall management team, how... And it's a pretty large project, so how it's... How it's going to be managed out going down the road.
In terms of build-out or final, once it's completed and management for the key development?
Well, I know that there have been concerns from various people about that large of a... You know, there's... It's all rentals, so, you know, 20 years from now, 15 years from now, 30 years from now.
Okay.
What type of structure is being put in place to continue the original concept and sustain that?
What is it that you're after?
Well... Typically, when you have a project that... Basically, we're looking at a village, right? And in a normal... Let's call it a normal village with 780 homes. There's close to 780 different homeowners. So, they may change, but there's not one person responsible for the overall character use of that village. And if 10, 15, 20 years down the road, it gets sold, and the new owner decides, hey, you know what? We're going to completely change the nature of what we want this to be. I'd just like to know what the plan is for continuity of the original concept moving forward.
Didn't we ask something similar of Penfield Square? Because we started to go down that dialogue a little bit with Nelson Lane House.
I think we've continued to ask the question through our review with respect to some of the elements incorporated in that.
Yeah. I just... I guess where I'm going here, we've got these two mixed-use developments before us.
Mm-hmm.
Both in sketch and...
The other one's probably final.
Well, okay. So, the things that we've been trying to vet through the past several months, we've talked often about how they're going to set the standard for future mixed-use developments in the community. So, you know, I think... I think, number one, we need to take the dialogue of rental off the table. Town doesn't have any control over whether these properties are rented or owned, and the state regulations don't permit you to treat those properties differently from an enforcement standpoint, whether they're rented or owned. I understand that the residents, the existing residents in the town have concerns about that, but, you know, I think what you're talking more about is what happens with the visible portions of the community, the facades and the infrastructure and the maintenance and the color schemes and the things that we are being charged with approving. Am I right?
I think that it's a legitimate question to ask for a project of this size and the impact it'll have on the town of Penfield. People ask the question all the time when a big box store comes in. Well, what happens if you go out of business? You know, 20 years ago, we had, you know, all these big box stores going out of business in Henrietta. I remember when Target came in. Those were concerns by a lot of people. Hey, what happens if you shut your doors? And we don't want these empty big box stores vacant around our town.
Yeah. And they still have some. And the fact is that I happen to know a lot about that because I... We were the town engineers for Henrietta during a lot of that process. So, the way that the town law was written is whether the facilities were occupied or vacant, they still had to maintain the facades. They still had to maintain the sprinkler systems, provide heat inside the building, plow the entire parking lots, you know, during the wear months to allow for emergency responders to get around the building, and all those types of things. So, even though you didn't drive by and see, like, a lot of cars in the parking lot and patrons patronizing these buildings, they weren't allowed to allow the properties to deteriorate. So, where I was kind of going with this with asking you is... My next question was for you, Peter. Is, you know, do we have a mechanism right now to... I mean, are we just posing the question and asking the applicant to give us a response that we can't hold them to?
Yeah. I mean, so, we're normally looking at the kind of the design aspects of the site, but I think that, you know, to the extent that this is going to be phased out over time, it's going to be a long-term construction. I think what you're looking for maybe is just tell us a little bit more about, you know, do you have other... Maybe other project experience and how you're going to manage it, at least during the construction phasing until it's all built out, so that, you know, in the event... You want to make sure that it gets built out once you approve it, right? Is that kind of what you're...
Yeah, that's...
So, kind of a little bit just maybe more by way of background as opposed to something that's tied into a particular element, maybe just to give a little more assurance that, hey, we want to understand how a project of this... Because we haven't really had a project that's been this big in a long time, and so we want to make sure we understand the plan to have this implemented once it's approved, right?
Yeah. So, maybe we can consider some kind of reform that's been, or to set conditions whereby certain elements of the project are completed before other phases are undertaken, things of that nature that would protect the town in the event that the project didn't go as well as the applicant had hoped, things of that nature. You think that would be helpful?
Yes.
Some of that might even go further than I think what he's asking, too, though, about like, tell, you know, more about understanding of... Because I don't know that much about the structure itself, but I mean, I don't know what, you know, you want to understand more about, you know, how they're trying to operate during the phasing and construction and...
We have... We have one entity proposing to build a new community. What happens, you know, Ralph decides he's going to sell it, and the new owner comes in and has a completely different vision of what they want as far as who they want to live there, how they want it to go, and it's something that we wouldn't want. How do we protect our residents in the town against... I'm not even wording this right. How do we assure our community that what is being proposed comes to fruition and is sustainable? And I do understand, you know, capitalism and market conditions and all that stuff. I'd like to put a bullet point in the sketch plan letter that is somehow a loser of this and ask the question. So, that's what I'm asking. Okay?
Okay. So, I just think that before we put this in writing to the applicant, I think we need to vet this a little further, and I think it needs to go through Peter to make sure that what we're asking here is something that we're within our right to ask and that has some teeth.
No question.
I mean, you know, it's got to be something that's... You use the word "sustainable." I'll use the word "enforceable." You know, it's like somebody said in an early application, something about deed restrictions. You know what good a deed restriction is? Once you transfer title to a property owner? Not much. So, you know, if we're going to go through this, you know, let's make sure that we agree on what we're asking them to do and that it's something that we're within our right to ask them and that after we go through that process, it's something that we can hold their feet to, or, I guess, in your case, hold a future owner's feet to the fire, if you will.
Can I ask a question before jumping too far into the rabbit hole?
Sure.
Obviously, our typical process when it comes to this post... Any post-approval activity and construction work and final build-out is the letter credit process that we hold to ensure that things are built per all the plans the board reviews and approves.
I don't think that's what we should worry about.
I know... I mean, there's... I know part of it is like the build-out of it to make sure it gets built accordingly and, you know, to make sure that... Yes, this project is going to take time to build out and to make sure that if it's not one entity, if something else happens, then it gets built accordingly. And then there's the future after that. If it maintains with this current developer, changes hands. To the future point, I would say that any proposed changes there, whether it's change of use, change of layout, everything has to come back to the town in some form or fashion, whether it be a change of use for one of the commercial tenants, non-residential tenants, has to go through either this board or the zoning board. Any site improvement that alters it from its original designs has to come back to this board. And while it's being... Going back, while it's getting built out, we still hold money to make sure that things do get built out until everything is done and up until the point a CVO is issued. So, we do have safeguards in effect from our standpoint.
Mm-hmm.
And I know the town is going to look at this as staff. We're going to look at this with a heightened detail as well because, to your point, AJ, and Pete as well, this is a development that we have not seen in a town of this size in quite some time. And as exciting as it is, there's, you know, obviously, everyone also has to look at this from both sides to say, you know, well, we look at it from the great side, but we have to try to plan for the unexpected a little bit. And that's why we have those mechanisms in place that have typically worked very well for us in the past to ensure that those things get done accordingly. But if you want to ask for more detail from them, I can understand.
You know, I don't know of another development in our town that is as substantial as this is proposed to be with a single... Okay, we may have had residential subdivisions, and overall, there may be more than 780 dwelling units, but those were...
If you go to the townhouse in 250, it's a 250, 441, the massive... The PD District down there.
A lot of those... A lot of those areas are old.
Yeah. Like, half of it is, but then you have the...
So, you got to navigate away.
See, that's kind of where I was going to go. That's exactly where I was going.
But you have the parts behind it.
But so...
So, what we have is this very large development that would typically have a homeowners' association with a prospectus that was vetted by the AG's office, and so the town would have that protection.
Right.
And so, I... Now, I think I see where you're going. So, we have something that's kind of similar, but without that kind of...
It's under management.
Extra level of...
Right.
Protection.
Asking a question. It's a sketch plan letter. The applicant can say, screw you, I'm not answering the question. Or you have no right to ask a question. Put it in the letter.
Let's... I mean, I could think about this, and we can talk and work on some paragraph that we can add.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
I'm not trying to do anything that's...
I just want to make sure you're asking all the questions you can at this point.
Absolutely.
No, that's fair.
Are you otherwise pretty close on the sketch plan letter, do you think?
I think that's the last comment.
Yeah. I would say yes.
So, we should have something by next meeting?
It'll be December's meeting.
For sure.
It's November, so...
Yeah.
Got a holiday.
We're not meeting on Thanksgiving?
Unless you want to. I mean, I'll bring food.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on that?
All right.
Good? Okay.
So, until then, we'll make the minor grammatical changes that you pointed out, AJ. Sorry, a long letter.
No, no problem.
And we'll discuss with town council about that topic.
Yeah.
And see what we can put into the letter and look for the board to issue this letter at your next meeting, then.
Yes. Yeah.
Other than that, no votes reported by the board at this time until we act on this letter, so we can move on to your next item.
All right. We don't have to...
Sketch plan.
Table any discussion based on preparation of a letter or anything like that?
Discussion plan. Letter is prepared.
Okay. All right. Okay. That letter's got to wait. Next.
All right. Our... Where are we? Do you want to do that or take care of these guys?
I'll take care of these guys.
One action item, or two action items, or one for discussion right now is for the Key Bank Building at Empire Boulevard in Baytown Plaza. They're coming in with a request for facade modifications, just a update to the building, and some minor improvements to the parking area for pedestrian accessibility. Can we start with what is out there now, Doug, before we jump into this? They have a sheet for existing, and that's the site. So, let's scroll down one page. Go to images.
Existing building.
There we go. It jumps. Okay, here we are. I think we're all pretty familiar with this building. It's been there for a number of years. Here's a shot of what it looks like today, and a lot of concrete, some glass, little pieces of trim here and there. And then we'll scroll down to the next page. Here's one 3D view of what's proposed with all-new colors, materials, signage, maintaining some of the glass elements there. If you scroll down to the... scroll down to the next page, it breaks down, it starts identifying the materials. We have a materials palette board that was submitted in this package as well. If you scroll down to that image, so we have some paint colors, materials, colors of those materials, et cetera. As you'll see, a lot of it is designed to complement the plaza with some earth tones that are in there. I did have a conversation with representatives of Baytown Plaza. They have seen this design as well, similar to how we reviewed the McDonald's application. They've seen this. They are supportive of the designs as proposed. And with that all being said, in terms of architecture, it opened up to the board for conversation. There's a couple of site plan, crosswalk parking things to highlight.
Looks the standing seam roof there now. Go back to the, the existing.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same roof. Is that the, that front, that number three?
I don't even see the name. It's a stupid question. It's all new roof all the way around.
But so is the shingle and so is the standing seam and the, that part over that front portico.
That's the shingles that are missing.
That shingle now, and that would become that metal standing seam roof, right?
Actually, they had shingles proposed as one of the materials. I think the standing seam, oh, there you go, just on that element would be the standing seam.
Backside over the drive-through, it looks like.
Probably, yep. Might be. Scroll back up.
Where was that, Doug?
It kind of does, of that element, the other front corner.
Other corner?
Yeah, the other front corner. The drive-through is on the backside that's not visible here.
Yeah, drive-through's over here. This would face like Bay and Empire more directly. This faces towards the inside of the plaza. Is that to break up the look of the roof line?
I would believe so. Also highlights the entrance, I guess, a little bit.
Is this similar to any of the Key Banks that they're calling?
We, we kept the color palette similar to, similar to Key Bank in their, in their brand standards. But this building is, is different enough from most other Key Banks that you're not going to be able to draw like a one-to-one correspondence. We've done all we can to keep it in line with Key Banks, but, you know, we're dealing with the unique-
Trying to match with the Baytown surroundings to occur.
And the standing seam metal, that is a request from the, from the landlord to, to coordinate with some of the, some of the aesthetic improvements they've made to the, to the, to the larger center.
Okay. Doesn't seem to be any, you know, I know in some of the other parts of the plaza, there's like the limestone and so that stone, tight veneer, stone or brick veneer. Doesn't seem to be any of that proposed out here.
We, so this is a, this is a wood-framed building. And we are replacing where there is currently CMU block, we're down at letter G right there, we're replacing it with, with the cast stone and the, and the ground face block elements. But unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not comfortable trying to clad this entire building in masonry just because of the underlying support structure.
It's wood. Okay. All right. Other thoughts? It's nice. I like the, you know, look at the stuff.
I, I looked at this application pretty close yesterday. I think what they're doing is a nice job. I think it'll be refreshing to get rid of some of the clear story glass and-
Updated.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it looks nice. All right.
You okay with this?
I am. Guess I'm cool with it.
I move to approve.
Second.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tities?
Hi.
Okay.
Thanks. We'll follow up with a letter of approval. Oh, hang on, rewind. Other part, site plan modification. I just want to go back up.
Oh, not so fast.
I think. Slow down. Thought you were done. So we have an existing site plan. I didn't have a whole chance to get this yet. Scroll down to our proposed.
Let's, we go to up side to side.
I see a crosswalk and a new sidewalk leading into it.
Handicaps is moved. Okay.
You guys highlight a two-minute summary?
So we are, we are bringing the parking lot up to current accessibility. We're relocating the accessible parking closest to what is, what is now the main entrance.
Okay.
And we are, I believe we are creating a, a compliant connection back to the street. That is where you can see the, there's a hatch portion of sidewalk leading into that, that, that crosswalk. If you go back to the very front page with the aerial image, that, that sidewalk does not currently exist in totality. So we are finishing that connection to allow someone who is-
So sidewalk will wrap around?
Yes.
Okay.
See, for the record, I reviewed the site plans too yesterday. I thought I was making a motion to approve their whole application.
Oh, sorry. We just didn't, we just didn't talk about it, sorry.
Duly noted. Still second? Still second. Okay.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, we'll send a letter documenting everything for you.
Thank you very much.
We voted.
We did that part.
All right, all right.
We were three, then they rewound and then they- Sorry, that sounded bad. I'm getting there. The one last thing I have to quickly, we got Wickham's plan. All right, recently, board approved the site plan for Wickham Farm moving over Sweet Corners Road. One item came up while the county was taking, that was a loud one, while the county was taking a look at this, as they were pulling, as they were looking at designs for sewers. They were designing it with one sewer, one private sewer to service what was, what currently is to parcels. It's not allowed under the county. So to mitigate that, they're proposing to merge the two properties together that are along Sweet Corners Road so that their sanitary service as designed can legally, under the county standards, service the whole site. So we have a plat map merging two properties together on Sweet Corners Road. Just need-
Any issues from you guys?
No, makes it in compliance for their sanitary sewer, so kind of necessary thing or to redesign.
No red flags, no problems?
No.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tities?
Okay.
And, as Allison reminded me, does anyone have any conflicts with the proposed meeting scheduled for 2019? If they do not, let's take a vote to bless it and put it into effect.
Yeah, you sent her my, yeah.
I've got it up on the screen too.
You gotta ask AJ and Phil.
Other than your October as usual?
October probably.
Nope. I can't get past tomorrow, so. My tomorrow just changed. I tried.
As far as I know, I'm good.
Tities for the one. AJ with the two.
Hey, Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tities?
Hi.
Done.
All right.
Roger.
Sketch.
What?
We got to talk about the-
The sketch plan.
Oh, crap. Well, let's talk about that sketch plan.
Yeah.
As, as has been our policy, if you will, for other sketch plan applications where there has been a lot of dialogue from the residents and a lot of information to take in, I would like to suggest that I tomorrow forward to you all of my notes on the things that I think should be taken into consideration before we act on this sketch plan application and have you share those with the other board members so that we can provide a more fruitful letter to the applicant. I think there's, I, I-
You play some soap times, what you're saying.
Yeah, well, I-
Want to make sure you capture all the concerns.
Capture all the concerns. And I think, I think there was some, some, you know, consistent concerns amongst most of the people that spoke. And I, and I, taking another look at their proposed 278 plan, I think there might be a way to accommodate some of the requests from the residents without drastically altering their plan.
Yeah, I'd like to get a copy of the plan that they showed on the whiteboard this evening. We did not have that available for you to see with the hammerheads that they were discussing.
You know-
That changes some, it could change some things.
It only changes a little bit, but in my mind, it, it creates potentially less of a buffer to the people to the north, which is a valid concern. So anyhow, give me a chance to pull, pull something together for you and then we'll have something to kick around.
Do you want me to begin drafting a template?
Yeah.
To begin with and then also incorporate those at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's get a motion to begin the preparation of the sketch plan letter incorporating comments that we heard, comments that we will generate.
Motion to direct staff to begin the preparation of a response letter to the sketch plan application?
Yeah, we can take a vote on it.
All right.
Hetzke?
Hi.
Burton?
Hi.
Tities?
Hi.
Any other business?
Unless there's any high-level comments you want to discuss with the sketch plan, no.
Anybody have anything that they won't remember until the next meeting?
A lot of video for it.
Copiousness.
I don't know that yet. I don't know that yet. I have a plan.
All right, we will adjourn. Thanks everybody for coming.
Peter doesn't know what he's going to forget yet.
Yeah, with their Christmas party.